To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
I'm gonna make some changes to the agenda. I'm removing E from personnel. We have that twice, I'm sorry, N and E. E is misspelled, so I'm removing E. I am... We are removing the vote on the Pete Lincolnson's contract. So those are the changes I'm making?
Were you gonna add Craig?
Oh, I'm... Thank you. I'm... Craig, I'm gonna add a... Add your committee reports for the landfill. That wasn't down there, but I do want that report. I know you had a meeting today. Okay, so with those changes.
Motion to approve the agenda.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Minutes from May 4th.
Motion to adjourn.
Let's stay.
Second.
Any discussion?
I guess I'm concerned about action items that should be approved after my comments on personnel.
You wanna be specific with them?
Um, the reference to Councilman Grimes. Said, "Yeah, nothing against planning..."
Can you speak in the mic?
There happens to Councilman Grimes saying, "Yeah, nothing against the new planning administrator." But feels that if you work in the city of Hot Springs and as citizens of Hot Springs, you should live in the Hot Springs or at least in the Fall River County. Councilman Ashley said taxpayers are receiving experience and background of the individual. It was not an action item.
So you're suggesting removing those comments?
They should be removed.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Yeah, I'm confused. Why do you want to remove? It was my personal comment.
We have a lot of personal comments up here.
First one I've heard tonight.
Pardon me?
First one I've heard tonight. This is my first time being here.
Any other discussion on the May 4th meeting notes? Do we remove them?
He's saying it's his comments. It's the direction.
We could include a lot of comments.
It's not my decision.
I would prefer they'd be removed.
I think you're making a general statement that comments, only action items should be in the minutes.
But the cost of publishing all this.
Yeah.
So can we... Are you making a motion that something be removed from the minutes?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion that we remove comments and only action items be included in the minutes because of the cost.
So Carl's comments on that one meeting was okay. The taxpayers paid about 10 bucks for it.
They both should be removed, yes.
So I'm talking previously.
All in favor?
She didn't have a second.
Oh, okay.
Is there a second?
A second.
Is there a second? No. Okay.
Yeah, she's second.
Second.
Ian? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, all in favor approving the minutes?
I have a question regarding that. Does that allow? You have a question regarding the motion for what you just voted on?
Sheriff, go ahead. Forward votes. Two to...
You're... I understand that you're voting to remove comments from the council meetings. That's going forward, that's not retroactive?
It's for the May 4th. We're discussing the minutes from our May 4th meeting.
Okay. So you're just removing those or you're removing them from there and forward?
We are discussing removing comments from the May 4th meeting.
Okay. At all. It has nothing to do with forward with future meetings though? Just that meeting? That's my question.
It has nothing to do with anything but what we're discussing right now. We can discuss going forward later, but right now we're discussing the May 4th meeting minutes.
I'm confused why it's necessary then to only eliminate those comments but not eliminate any in the future? That's what I'm trying to get at. Are you voting the comments will never be included?
That motion failed, so we're not voting for that now. Now we are voting for the minutes as they are written in your package. Approval for the May 4th regular meeting minutes. All in favor? As they are.
I have a point on that. We need a motion of second to go around that. I'll make the motion that we accept the minutes as is ready.
We have that.
I thought we had that.
We have.
We do have that.
And then Georgia.
And then Georgia did that.
She said discussion.
Okay, we got it. Good enough.
All right, all in favor of approving the May 4th minutes as written?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carried. Bills in between. Hundred forty-six thousand, three hundred and forty-nine and forty-six cents.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Current claims. Hundred twenty-four thousand, eight hundred and sixty-seven cents. You have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
I'm sorry. I have a question, just ask Nolan. I assume he's overseeing the advertising at the plunge and I was told that that was about finished and there's a lot in here, so I just asked him.
We, you know, got, tried to get it all done before the season.
I know that there's been a lot and there's still a lot in this and I was told that, you know, we'd become... There's one of the bills is what? Nine hundred and seventy-five dollars. I just asked him, six hundred and fifty dollars and a hundred and twenty-four, that maybe you look at that?
It... All spending at the plunge is going to greatly decline. We're done with maintenance, we're done with advertising, you know, mostly. So I anticipate that and we are watching it. Good question, thank you. Any other discussion?
Yeah, page seven. Spending a hundred twenty-four hundred dollars on a sauna, are we done or is... How much more is it gonna cost to get the sauna up and going?
The sauna is complete.
It looks to me like we're on track again this month, I guess the... I don't know. How much did we spend totally on that sauna? Does anybody know about?
The sauna itself costs twelve thousand dollars. There was some electrical work and some installation work.
I'd like to know, I guess, the total that we've spent so far on that sauna that...
Can I stoop at you, Val?
Yeah, be happy to.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carried. Communications from the public? I don't have anybody signed up, so... If someone wants to speak, let me know now. Okay, I'm gonna go to personnel. Again, we struck E, it was a due...
Oh, is that one I struck? Yeah, I've got an issue with this panel. Is that what you're asking?
No, I'm asking for communications from the public.
Yeah, that'd be what I just said.
You may step forward and speak into the mic.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Matthew Paul Smith.
You may...
Do I have it? I hear him.
Please do.
All right, on Friday, um, this is in regards to, uh... All this animal stuff here. On Friday, my beloved cat was trapped by your animal control officer, John. Forty-eight hours prior, he traps two of my foster kittens, which I did get back from Battle Mountain. My, our beloved ditto cat, who is a fixed cat, um, yeah, John chops this damn thing, takes it over Shopko Hill over there and drops it off at a ranch out there and lets it go. We're missing our cat. Not a feral cat, we're talking about a, uh, part of our family. I'm sorry if I'm upset, but man, you know, it's... There's, he's in violation of five, five rules, five statutes, articles, codes, whatever you wanna call them in this book here.
What is that book, sir?
This is the City of Hot Springs, um, Animal Rules and Regulations, little thingy, I guess you'd call it. There's no title to this thing other than chapter four dash egg, Animals in Foul. Were they taken to a shelter or anything? No, but just dropped out over there. We're talking about a fixed...
So were these cats, um...
My fixed male cat.
Under your restraint when they were trapped?
They were in fifty feet outside of my yard.
Okay.
Okay. Which is only in violation of four dash eight dot zero seven dot zero five zero, which Kim from the city states that there is no law about keeping your cat in the yard. However, that article right there states that no animal shall be at large. And then John turns around and disregards five other rules in y'all's book here. Meanwhile, we're... I'm upset, my other half's upset, we've got a little girl that's upset, and I can't get my damn cat back because John is sitting there. Here's his words. "Well, that possibly looks like one of the cats, and if it is, I possibly took him to a ranch." And I asked him where? "Second driveway on left, past White Hill Road," which is Emily Tibbetts or something like that, okay? Well, I stopped by there and left a note and I stopped by and spoke to boys that said, "No, they don't have their cat." I called her, she goes, "Well, I'll let you know as soon as I get home." "Oh, no, she won't return my phone calls or anything." We stopped by and called her numerous times since then. Well, her partner, her lover, who is Dino or Dana or something like that that lives across the street, we go over there and I asked her, 'cause she's in cahoots with her. "Oh, well, no, they have nothing to do with it." She tells me, "They stopped harassing her." Well, excuse me, that was the first time I called her. Anyway, the... I'm sorry, I'm upset. But John, he, John said he dropped them off over there. And he's very careful in his wordings not to admit to anything. A lot of possibly's going on here. Kim and John went out that evening, 'cause I went down to City Hall and I was down there for several hours dealing with Kim down there. They went out. Yeah, they went out to that spot looking for my cat, because they know they messed up.
Sir, they did not mess up.
So this lady, Emily, "Won't even return my phone call or anything." Well, that, I mean, how guilty is that? And all I want is my damn cat back. How many other little kids are missing their cats? There's posters around this town all the time. I'm sorry if you don't like cats. Law states that you can have three cats.
Sir, he is following city ordinance from 2001 for the last fourteen years. Cats are supposed to be under restraint by the owner, collared and registered.
No, they're not supposed to be collared, no ma'am.
Well, what, where do you put the registration then?
Read the book, shouldn't know where it says they're supposed to be collared. You ever try to keep a collar on a cat? You ever try to keep a cat in your yard? Even Kim states that you can't keep your cat in the yard.
That's not the city's issue.
That is my, that is my issue, that is city's issue. Even Kim, okay, who works for the city, she took Scott's position. She's a cat lover, works at Battle Mountain Humane Society. She even states the fact that you cannot keep a cat in the yard. That's absurd. John, who works for the, he's a...
Sir, I don't care about Kim's personal opinion right now. What I am telling you is that our ordinance, you need to talk, these people at this table...
That's why I'm here. That's why I'm here, is to talk to these people.
Okay, so focus on what the city can do.
Okay, so this here says that, this here says that if he is to trap an animal, by the way, which he baited, and that is in violation of four dash eight dot zero five dot zero two zero. He's in violation there. If he does trap an animal, he is to take it to a shelter. One, he's supposed to make a record of it, which he did not, and that's in violation of four dash eight dot zero three dot zero four zero. He's supposed to take it to a shelter and coordinates with or by himself, four dash eight dot zero four dot zero one zero. He needs to take it to a shelter. Violation of four dash eight dot zero seven dot zero eight seven says impoundment must be at least three days, not to be greater than five days. That doesn't mean taking it over the damn hill and dropping him off. Remedies and collection, four dash eight dot zero eight dot one zero zero states that you have three to five days to collect your animal. How do you collect them if you drop them off over the damn hill over there? I want my cat back. I missed my cat. I'm sorry if you're not a cat lover, but I'm sure there's a lot of other people with this...
I don't know why you're speaking for me about cats or anything like that.
Because the way you're looking at me right now, like it's just a damn cat.
No, because you're making a threat and I...
I'm not making any threat. Have I made, I, I, yea or nay? Have I made a threat?
No.
No.
Thank you. I'm sorry if I'm agitated and upset. A lot of people don't like cats.
You are being threatened.
Can I say something? Says sir. Sir.
Yes.
Oh, right here. When did we start hauling cats out of town?
That's not in the ordinance, is it?
I've never been with us to do that.
John stated to me the fact that he either takes them to Battle Mountain, he takes them to Barnyard, he takes them to Munt House, where he takes them over the hill out there. Her and I have been out there, they and I have been out there for the last couple of days going door to door out there. These ranchers are surprised.
I believe he also told you that he did not take that cat out.
Excuse me, ma'am, I'm speaking. We went to door to door.
You have about one more minute, okay?
Okay, that's fine. These ranchers out there were appalled by the number of cats showing up on their property. The one lady in particular, Carl, matter of fact, um, y'all, I don't know the name of y'all probably do. She said, stated the fact that, you know what? She goes, out of all these cats out there, she goes, "Half of them aren't even wild cats. They weren't in the house, they weren't food. They're people's pets. This has to stop. I don't want my damn cat back." I mean, there's gotta be changes.
I did discuss this with, with John.
John needs to start either following this or I want John's job.
He doesn't believe he took it out there. I do have complaints of you trespassing however.
How am I trespassing? Excuse me.
So I suggest you be careful with that.
No, no, stop. You said I was trespassing. How was I trespassing? Where did I trespass, ma'am?
Uh, the woman's house that you...
That's not trespassing. There's no, there's no posted signs. It does say posted property, people offering anything.
I'm not gonna go there. I'm not gonna go there. You know what you did, all right?
I either want John to start following the stipulations that you all have written down in here, said no other people will lose their pets. Or I want his job.
You need to keep them under restraint for the ordinance.
How about he follows the damn rules that are written right here in your paper, ma'am?
I will be having continued discussions with him about that.
Okay, and what do we do about my cat in the meantime?
He does not believe he has your cat.
Excuse me?
He does not believe he has your...
That's right, 'cause he let him loose. He is not in his possession.
That is not what I was told. I don't know what happened to your cat nor does he.
Yes, he does. That's bullshit, ma'am. I'm sorry.
Sir, sir.
What?
Could he try to trap, put the cat out where he let it go?
Fifty feet off my property line.
No, I mean, out in the country. Where he took it, is there any way to try to get the cat out there that way?
I don't, you'd have to ask John and Kim that. I know they were out there jogging around looking for him.
Yeah.
'Cause Kim knows that John messed up. I'm not looking to get John fired or get him in trouble. I just want my damn cat back and I just want this stuff to stop. How many, you know, like you say, how many other people are missing their pets and have posters up? You know, I'd rather, I'd rather know the fact that, you know, he's either dead or that he's in somebody's house where he's warm and everything than the not knowing.
No, I know that the former animal control officer took the cats to the vet. I don't know anything about this taking them over a hill.
Right, the prior fellow, Dave, I think his name was, something like that. He was good. He kept records of everything. This new guy, John, since started in January, he doesn't keep records. Had he followed this, I'd, that would have been an issue. I'd have my cat back right now.
Something needs to be done and I'm sure the mayor...
That's what I'm asking. I'm gonna have to get my cat back and I know that's not gonna happen.
We do, we are looking into that and for the record, I am a pet lover, have been my whole life. So I don't, I, I do take offense to what you said to me, just so you know.
Okay, well, a lot of people either cat or dog, you know, and a lot of times you say, you know, cat and a lot of people are like, "Well, it's just a freaking cat," you know, and it's... But when they're with you for that long, you're a part of the family. When they sleep on your pillow ducks every night.
Personally, I ever cried before serious family things was over a dog, so I get the cat thing, okay? I, we, we don't, we don't know where your cat is.
John does know where my cat is, ma'am.
Well, that is not what I'm hearing.
Well, you know what? There's three sides to every story. His side, her side, and this truth.
Well, it, Kim, Kim will be doing that as a favor to you. That is not her position.
That is why John was very careful in every word he stated to me.
We will be keeping different, better records or records going forward. But we have a lot of complaints.
Little late ditto, you know.
We have a lot of complaints in your neighborhood about feral cats, so I recommend that you keep them under restraint for our ordinance.
I'm sorry, how, how many, how many households are in... What's our quadrant up there? What's, what do you all call that? Our little section?
Ward.
Yeah, the ward number or something like that. What is it?
I have no idea. How many animals...
That northwest corner. How many households are in that northwest ward? Okay, there's, there's probably a couple hundred houses. You're allowed three, you're allowed three cats per household. So that's, yeah, that's quite a few cats. I'm not denying the fact there's too many cats in this town.
We, we get a lot of complaints in that area about cats.
Come on, you trap a fixed male cat? That's just, I mean, wouldn't it...
We do not...
I, I showed you a picture right now. You'd probably object it and this and that, I mean...
You know, it's your word against it, so I have, I'm in a tough spot here, but he does not believe he trapped your cat.
Yeah, and that's right, and the third person I can tell the truth is Ditto.
Do you know where our page is, by the way?
I do not. You know, it was pretty windy that night. You know, maybe the wind blew it over the hill. And possibly, maybe that if my cat shows up, possibly, maybe...
Any other communications from the public?
There, you know, a whole bunch of possibly, maybe. It's the same thing I got from John. Possibly, maybe that if my cat shows up, possibly, maybe you'll look, get your cats back. I'll help them look for them. They're probably over the hill. Like I say, it was pretty windy that night.
I don't wanna continue this discussion.
I spoke my mind. That's all I had to say.
Thank you.
I wasn't gonna get anywhere, but maybe...
We're gonna go to personnel.
I've got a question. I'd like to know if we're taking the cat out of town.
There was...
You know Mike?
I didn't know that.
Isn't he under your jurisdiction?
I didn't know that till the other day.
My understanding is that there's been ranchers that ask feral cats for their barns. And instead of taking them out, he took them out of town.
Why aren't we following our ordinance?
I'm sorry, can you, can you share me where that's at in your paperwork here?
Why can't we...
Can you, can you please show me where that's legal in your paperwork?
Sir, sir, let me knock here for a second. Why can't we take them to the barnyard for three days and then take them to the rancher?
Then let a rancher come get them.
That way if somebody's missing a cat, they have some way to look for it.
I do not know how long it was between when he trapped him and when he took him out there. So that's something we need to check on.
Friday, less than 24 hours.
Sir, I'll have to ask John that.
I wish John was here right now. And apparently, from what I understand, he's pretty shaken up over it, which is great.
He is.
And I'm glad he is.
He is an animal lover, so I know he didn't do anything.
I'm an animal lover too.
He didn't do anything that...
He didn't do anything what? Wrong? Yes, ma'am, he did. He violated five of your stipulations in here.
We will do a better job of tracking.
If he can't, I will. I would like his position if he can.
Well, I...
And I'd like that on the record.
Thank you.
Have a nice night, y'all.
I encourage you to work with your, your council if you don't like the ordinances, but he's...
I'll work with you, ma'am. I don't know who you are, but you're sitting at the head of the table right there. This is the first time I've been here, I'm sorry. I don't mean to dish this out.
These are the people that, these are the people that vote on ordinances.
Okay.
The council, so you need to...
Okay, why are you sitting at the head of the table? I know, I'm just, I'm not being facetious. I'm not being facetious. I'm asking, I'm, I'm, I don't know. I've never been to one of these.
But he's the mayor.
You're the mayor?
Yes.
You're sending?
Yes.
Okay, the name on this is Don DeRice? So that makes this whole thing null and void?
No. No what?
No?
No, if the council...
So it just needs to be re-updated?
We can, we can take a moment to discuss our formal government. The, the council members, we have eight, two from each ward.
Okay.
Are the people who vote when we propose a resolution or ordinance. All of our animal control ordinances are voted on by the council that was in place at the time. The current council or councils going forward can vote and propose different ordinances or resolutions to change things as we see fit. So if you have a problem with any of those ordinances, I highly recommend, I believe you're in Ward Three, that would be Wes Grimes and Carol Ann Sworzenbach, that's who you would work with to propose changes to our ordinances. But until those changes are made, we have to uphold those.
Well, they're pretty good written down.
They have to be followed though. Obviously they make...
They're written down pretty well, they just need to be followed.
Okay.
And I apologize for my temper and everything, but I, you know, dang it, this just happened Friday and I still, you know, I still miss my ditto. I just want it back.
And I know people are taking their personal time to go look for your cat. I know people are very concerned and feel very bad about it. What does the cat look like?
Oh, wow, cat.
Okay, I see it, it's living in Ward Three. Yep.
Does that look like a feral cat to you?
Oh, wow.
How many cats do you think? I like to ride a Harley.
Wow. I've seen a cat of something like that. It just happens to be near the... We can't hear you.
I have a Paul Wilson.
Can you come on? I bet he does. I bet I have seen it.
He never, he doesn't go out through the woods. He might go a yard and a half, each direction, every single cat I have from people.
He's beautiful.
I just had a quick suggestion.
I've actually seen him already from John.
Hey Matt, do you have a copy?
I'll give him back.
Photo of that that you could, we could post on the city website?
I know, I know John would not take a cat like that.
Yeah, I was thinking about doing something Fall River Swap. Oh, I had, really quick, one more thing, and this is on a friendly note, I promise. Um, Battle Mountain Humane Society has a desperate need of volunteers for up there. We have all these inmates that sit down here. Can we maybe do something where they sign up, maybe volunteer to go up and help shampoo dogs and clean up and stuff like that and pet dogs? I'm sure they would love to get out for a little bit.
They should call up to the VA. There is a work program there.
At the VA?
Or maybe the county.
What about our inmates there? I mean, I know we use them to paint curbs.
Oh, will that be county?
And I know we use them up at the golf course all the time, which belongs to the city.
Well, those are actually states. Their department fractions.
Can we maybe use them, get them out, get some fresh air, maybe get the animals some?
Real quickly, then we're done, okay? When you, when you, you have to have supervision and transportation for them.
Sure, Wally wouldn't mind. I'll transport them up there in my van, and I'm sure Wally wouldn't mind watching them. Just, just, just be for God's.
That is county though, just to be clear, that is county, not the city.
You'd have to talk to the sheriff.
Yeah. We do hope you find your cat.
All right, all right, y'all. Y'all put them on, on that Fall River Swap, letting them go, push a picture there, and then with Battle Mountain. Um, Kim started to thank pictures with Battle Mountain.
All right.
Thank you for your time. Sorry for being out of line if I was, but.
I know, it's a touchy subject. Thank you. Any other communications from the public? Okay, we're going to go to personnel. Again, um, he's removed and covers it. Going to do them all together? I'll make the motion.
I'll suck us.
All in favor, a discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye. I was in favor, I'm sorry. Good night, man.
Karen, did we hear what you were?
I don't know. I was just, my suggestion was.
I'm sorry, I, I flustered there.
It's okay. Uh, my suggestion was just that he share a photo with somebody of Fall River Swap, he said, and they all share it on Facebook or something, just try to get that word out on social media.
It is a very cute black and white cat. It, it does look like a family pet, so. It's just an unfortunate situation. Right, it is, it's a tough one. It always is. John's got the toughest job in town, I think, so. We're going to go to resolutions, um, and this is to appoint the election clerks. So everybody take a good look at that, if you have it. It's only for Ward One and Ward Three. Those are the only wards we have elections in.
Second.
Any discussion or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. And special thanks to those who are agreeing to be the election clerks. We appreciate you supporting democracy. Oh, skip and a. Motion to approve signing of the maintenance and financial agreement between state DOT and city of, and the city for pavement maintenance at the airport. This is something that just started in 2014.
I want you to accept that.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
What's it? Is there a cause for this? Is this the eight, eighty-nine hundred dollars?
Yes, I think it's something that's around just under nine.
In his budget?
Yes, airport. And if it doesn't get done, we have bigger problems. We gotta do it.
Yeah, they've already done the safety strips or the test strips. They're now ready to give us the money, so.
Okay.
All in favor of receiving it?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried on B. Item C. And if we're still in discussion, that's fine as well, but discussion on possible motion to revise, um, resolution 2015 dash thirty, designate hours of operation for Evans Plunge for the remainder of 2015 and 2016.
I guess I, I still.
So we can do discussion with you?
Almost there.
Well, I.
So here is discussion.
As a discussion, I, I still believe we need to postpone until we get more notice from the P O S system because we did advertise to be open, um, when we bought this for all, all the time, basically, and for the holidays on here, uh, ones that we observe for regular employees too, so. I don't feel that we should be changing our hours right now.
Is it still open for discussion?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, I know several people that are members and they're good with this. They see that the city's losing money and they think something should be done.
We have, um, memberships that have been bought though for those hours to be open. And until we advertise it, we're going to change it. And the P O S system we bought in April? No, February.
That was what the, um.
So I'd like to wait until we get all the numbers, until we give this it for a year.
Well, you know, I've got the numbers here from last month. Expenditures was eighty-eight thousand and revenue was thirty-eight Georgia.
You're going to always have that much in the wintertime.
Georgia, how?
Wes knows that.
Georgia, how many months do you, do you think we can sustain subsidizing this? Fifty thousand every month, every month.
Using the P O S system and in the wintertime, you never do it.
Georgia, ignoring the problem is not going to make it go away.
I'm not ignoring it. I said, I think we need numbers.
Okay, uh, Bob, you want to speak up or stand up?
I'm sorry, I'm a little confused at this point. Are memberships sold by, by the hours that they're open or just memberships sold for when the plunge is open?
They were originally sold because we said we were going to be opening around. And those memberships are still the ones that we are actively using right now. So when we cut back hours, we're cutting back what we said we were offering.
Okay, so that when memberships were sold, Georgia, people were buying them because the plunge was advertised to be open at ten o'clock regardless whether it was making money or not? Is that what I'm hearing?
No.
I'm just pulling the ten o'clock up out of the air because I'm confused as to.
Yes, those were the hours we offered at that.
I, I thought maybe memberships were just sold for whenever the plunge was open.
When you buy a membership and the hours are stated there, that's what you buy them for. I don't think.
Are the hours stated on the memberships? No.
They're offered on the, um.
Are they on the memberships?
Because I had, have to say, I don't know.
That, that's my confusion.
We had ideas where we were going to cut back on all that. There's different things that we can do to cut back. And I have to agree with Wes that we are not here to subsidize all the time, although we want to offer free this and free that, but we still need to look at numbers. I am not going to say we can guess.
I.
It's closed at noon because we don't have enough people that we can pay for that. But there are different ways of handling this, and I do not believe this is the correct thing to do.
I, I agree with you, Georgia, that we need to look at numbers. But I also think that if the numbers show that we can't sustain the hours that the operation is open.
And that's why.
We need to change the hours regardless of what people may have bought. Members, excuse me, I'll be done in just a moment. Regardless of what times the people that may have bought memberships were misled as to when the plunge would be open, I guess.
Maybe we need to be a little more specific then, then, but my thought is we had intended to buy that P O S system from day one, and it took us a whole year to do it.
And I think that's the best thing that you could have done.
And meantime, we still need to look at numbers.
And I agree with that. But I, but I, I don't think we should be closing any doors as to any changes that need to be made. We're not in a position that we can subsidize indefinitely.
Right, and we still have some time that we can look at this.
Okay.
I'd like to say something about this. The way I look at this plunge is, is we've got three options we would go with on this plunge. We can treat it as a municipal pool, which means we're going to continue, the taxpayers will continue to subsidize it for the lawsuit. Or we could use it as a business, which means all the discounts go down the tube. And we have a dollar a day, and that'd be our, our premier thing. Or we could work towards trying to make it, find a happy medium in the middle. And my feeling on this hour thing is a move towards trying to find a happy medium in the middle. So that we're not, we're not closing it. If it was a business, we'd close it for December, January, and February. Because you ain't making any money.
That's right, that's why they sold it.
So that's, I guess that's the way I look at this, as for closing this in the middle or keeping it open, but we're also cutting down on some of our expenses. And that's, I guess that's my, my say on the way I feel about the plan. So I guess I'm for the virgin way it is now with the hour.
And, and Tim, I agree with your position with, with the one exception that you're really looking at more than just a municipal pool at this stage. We put in the sauna, we've upgraded all of the weight equipment. A few council meetings ago, I was hearing about hiring a personal worker down there.
There's been no updates to the weights. Bob, let's be clear here, there's been no updates to the weights.
I thought we were discussing a lot of changes to the weight machines and so forth.
A lot of other people were discussing that, but we were not.
Okay.
Okay, the city did not do any changes to that.
The city has not made any upgrades in the weight equipment.
That is correct.
Okay.
I come by my opinion, Bob, because of, of what I've heard in these meetings with, whenever it comes up to the pool is, is we want to, we want to give this guy a break, we want to give that guy a break, we want a free day here, a free day there. That's a municipal pool.
Okay. And, and I agree with you on dumping all of the discounts.
And, you know, and if you're going to run it as a municipal pool, then all municipal pools that I know of, I'll guarantee you there are some that make a lot of money, but most of them end up subsidized by the taxpayer. So if you're going to have a municipal pool, you're going to have to go along with that. Like Wes said, you're going to have differences in the money going in and the money going out. Or you can run it as a business, and that takes care of the discounts and the free day and all this other stuff. But if we could go small pieces like this, the way I understand it is this is a substantial savings, is that correct, Theodore?
Yep.
Then we're moving towards a middle position where we can kind of keep down some of the cost and yet still have a good operating pool.
It would be open every day.
It would be open every day. So we still can be open every day.
Right. Well, except for the holidays, except for a few holidays.
Except for a few holidays. What we're going to do is we need to move into just a little bit more of the business mode than.
Well, then, I agree with you, we need to do away with benefits. We're going to have to take a long hard look at some of that stuff.
Any other discussion? I think we're going to vote on this then. All in favor of the proposed, um, operation hour change?
Yeah.
Yep. So all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
I think I still have five, so motion carried. Thanks, I know it's a tough subject. So what did you agree on? You can take this if you want. It's, it's basic, well. Oh, no. I've seen it. Plenty, thank you. Appreciate the good discussion. So we're going to new business, item A. Looking for a motion to accept sealed bid proposals for cutting hay at the airport.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Uh, any discussion? I guess here. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Motion carried. Item B. Motion to submit, um, Deadwood Historical Society grant on behalf of honoring our heroes for the proposed Freedom Trail Historical Walk with statues. And I think we have a statue here that wants to speak. So, um, we'll do the discussion first unless someone wants to make a motion and a second. Or we just start with discussion? Start with, yeah, I'll let the council, okay.
Can we discuss?
So we're just discussing.
All right, I gave you a packet you should have got. There is a correction in that packet on the third page. Each year is fifty feet, not eighty feet.
Oh, okay.
Okay, I mean that. We have, uh, a rendering of what we think the statue is going to look like. This is, uh, our cat will be made from this. We've already moved forward on that. Uh, the only other comments I would make, I wanted to, I didn't get it done, and I would do that for this council before, before too long. I wanted to mark the Freedom Trail so you could actually walk the trail, because when it's four thousand two hundred and twenty feet from the flagpole in the backyard to Centennial Park on the Freedom Trail, that's the exact mileage and, or footage. And I wanted to mark where each battle would have been down the trail, so you'd understand what they were going to see when they walked down the way eventually. Not right away, but eventually, you know, it's a process that we work on slowly as it works for us. The location for Mr. Russell here will be when you step off, uh, the bridge and head up the walkway towards the American Legion heading north.
You talking the dip bridge?
The one by Dairy Queen.
Old Dairy Queen?
Yeah, old Dairy Queen.
Just so I know exactly what you're speaking of.
And World War One would happen just before you get to the American Legion. And the reason I changed the footage was to try to maximize the amount of statues that would be in Centennial Park, because that would be World War One, World War Two, Vietnam, Korea, uh, Bosnia, et cetera, and minimize the impact on the Freedom Trail. As far as a walking venue and make it easier to watch after, et cetera. And if you look at those miles, that's why I want to put it out there for you so you can actually see it. And there's Russell, if you want to come.
And he's the Civil War, correct?
Yes, ma'am. He is Medal of Honor winner from, uh, that died in Hot Springs with tuberculosis. You have in your sheet the story on it. And we'd like to make that first statue. I believe we can make this happen, and I think it's good for the city. I think it's good if it's a state, and I, I, I do believe you can, you've already explained to them, they have pretty good support with the Deadwood League people. And it will be no cost at this point, other than the mount that we put him on eventually. I understand that we won't even be able to put him in the ground till October. Okay, it's going to take that long for us to, to get all the paperwork done. And your discussion, it's not money I'm going to need or something I may need quickly. And we can discuss the size, be it four feet tall, the mount, or any more, et cetera. Any questions, I'd be more than glad to answer.
Dan, I'm, I'm wondering if, um, you know, since you don't have the other twenty-five, if it wouldn't be better to do the submission in January instead of the June one?
This is a different one. January is not a submission date for this one. It needs to go in June. If it doesn't go in June, it won't go until next June.
June second.
This is a different, different than the January.
Okay. All right, um, Krista, right?
Yeah.
Please stand up. You're, I can already tell you're not going to speak loud enough.
I just wanted to be clear on, um, we're, again, are you talking about the bridge behind, like, the Mueller Center here or the one that, over by the, um?
Sixth, Sixth Street.
The reason that I didn't start at the Mueller Center is because they have a memorial back here that's not been finished.
Oh.
And for, for me to impose anything on whatever they want to do for the future would be improper.
Gotcha.
Okay, so I picked a spot where there's, there's nothing else at, and, and that would be, once you cross the river and start up the Freedom Trail.
Okay.
He would be there, and that's where the years would start. If you look at the year markings, that would take us back to Revolutionary War halfway between the Mueller Center and, and, uh, the old Dairy Queen. And then back, back to the Native American statues, which are not out of question. Okay, because that's part of our history of Hot Springs.
Yeah, that's fantastic.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions up there?
Yeah, Don, the, the statue up here.
Oh.
Statue itself is going to be all bronze?
Yes, sir. This, this will go in, uh, and, and be made into a small bronze statue. They call it a Marquette with no R. And we will, what we're going to do is we will have two of these made initially, and we will, that will be part of the process for making the one. Once the grant is approved in June, they, or initiated in June, we will not get the grant till October, that's when they make their decision. That gives me till October to raise the rest of the funds, uh, which is not going to be, I don't see it as a problem. I don't see that to be an issue at all. And then once, they won't, they basically give us the funds and go to the bank like all their money does.
And the base, what will it be made of?
I'm just saying we're just going to do cement.
Just put it in cement?
Part of the great cost that I'm going to have to take over is the fact that on the side of the, the mountain is where we're going to have the placards with the history and all the items. So the actual center of it is not relevant, be I dress it in marble or I dress it in.
Well, my question is, is maintenance, from a maintenance standpoint, I mean.
I, I don't think.
If the base is concrete and the statue is bronze, I mean, there's going to be very little maintenance, I would think.
That's, when you look at the bronze statues that, that are put up and, and the fact that they go on cement, there is not a lot of maintenance to it. I'm, I'm not going to say it's maintenance free, but the question was, are we going to light it? And then the, my answer was simple. You got a whole line of lights. You just hook onto the pole, put a, uh, one of those new, new lights on there and point at the statue and it's lit. The lights go on and light anyway. So the, the actual cost, in many, many ways, I'm trying to make it inexpensive to the city as I can. And the war markers do not need to be lit, and they're simple. We haven't decided what they're going to give you. Does that answer your question, Senator?
Ed?
These bases, being concrete, those materials being in Hot Springs, have you approached them to see if they would be willing to donate to concrete?
Say against him.
Have you approached those materials to see if they would donate concrete bases?
No, but I sure will. You betcha. I have found in the past, Hot Springs is a very giving city. That's why I'm not really concerned about the cost and all the other items because we'll make it happen. One of the things we're going to do is sell the statue. It's a city statue, so I will correct my complaint. But the point will be, if you want to buy a finger, I'll give you a...
Noting example.
But the reason for that, two-fold, these cheaper like this, because if you own part of that statue and somebody's messing with it, you do something about it. You know, so that's...
More eyes on it.
That's part of our, our process of ownership. It'll belong to the city, and it'll never belong to any one of us, but the point is we're trying to do this in a very smart way that's very inexpensive to the city.
Don, just so you're aware, we did not have as much time as I would have liked with the council to discuss what we had talked about before, but I do want them to know that I did have a long discussion with Kate in Deadwood because this is a non-standard grant for what they typically do, historical grants for more like historical buildings or things like that. They, they will, they are fine with it because it's in our downtown historical district. So if that's what got anybody hung up, they are fine with it being in our historical district as far as the requirements of the grant.
How far does our historical district run to, Don? Do you know that answer?
I have a drawing.
Yeah, it comes down from the VA on the back side and down to...
It's almost our whole downtown.
Does it run clear down through the bridge?
Deadwood is fine with that being part of our historical district. So that, for this discussion, yes. For, you know, what the VA is doing for the Section 106, I don't know exactly where it goes.
Is this a pass-through grant?
Yes, they, they would give the city the 25,000 and then we would pass it on to...
But it's not really written like a typical pass-through grant. I've looked at it, talked to somebody, and I would feel better if our attorney looked at this, and maybe we could table it, let her look at it, and bring it back at the next meeting and get some questions.
If you table it, we won't get to it.
Our meeting before is the second?
If I don't hand them the paperwork by 2 June, they're going to...
We can fax it on the 2nd of June. They're fine with that up until right before 5:00 PM. I did talk to Kate about that because I knew that gave us another meeting and a little more time because, like I said, we didn't have the discussion that we would have liked to have on this topic before this meeting. We got caught up on other things a little bit. But if the council wants to make some kind of motion, I'm fine with proceeding.
That we table this until the next meeting?
I have to allow a vote of tabling to the next meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
I think they want some more clarification from the attorney. He never asked about...
What's the vote, pardon?
Two sides of the vote. You said all in favor, but you didn't say the other side.
I didn't, I'm sorry, who said all, who, we voted for in favor of tabling? Just the two. Abode. Abode? Abode! You don't want to table it. Okay, so, want to vote on it today.
Make a motion, we go for it.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
I do have one more question. What will the flag be that he's holding?
It'd be a bronze flag. The flag he captured, in your, in your, the flag he captured was the flag of the 42nd Virginia Infantry. That's the flag, and the reason the flag is down here, it's to show, it's not up here. Okay, but it being bronze, you'll see that it's, the bars and stars because that's why he got the Medal of Honor. The reason he got the Medal of Honor is because he captured that flag of the 42nd Virginia Infantry, which eliminated that organization for the rest of the summer.
Is it a Confederate flag or a Union flag?
It's, it's a Confederate flag.
That's what he captured.
We need to speak up for Don, he does...
I said that might cause a few issues, Krista.
Again, we discussed that, and the point that the flag will be touching the bronze thing. And the plaque itself will explain, the plaque will explain why he got the Medal of Honor. It says right on there, "For capturing and decimating that organization." So I think that in itself would probably dispel anybody's thoughts of, we were trying to say the South Rosekin or something. And I do understand your issue because we had the issue at the VA. The difference is the prominence of the display. In this case, it's not prominently displayed, it's...
Yeah, people who educate themselves on the Confederate flag, you would understand it's not a racist flag, but people are ignorant in thinking it was, so that's, you can't educate them.
Me and, me and you both understand that. Again, I, I think that's why we originally thought the flag might be up, but then that's why we decided to put the flag down because it's easier to understand.
That door has to remain open.
Sorry.
I didn't realize that.
So would you be your doorman?
Ray, you're always in trouble.
I know.
Okay, I believe I have a motion and a second. So I'm going to, all in favor of approving, submitting this grant was...
Now we vote.
I didn't, we did. And then he did, discussion.
No, I said one more.
One more question. So all in favor of allowing the city to represent, submitting the Deadwood Historical Society Grant on behalf of the honoring our heroes? Say yea?
Aye.
Aye? So I got, raise your hand. Did you all say, okay? Motion carried, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Council, thank you very much.
So close, can you come on up and talk about item C, which is community-oriented policing services?
All right. The grant is called COPS. It's a community-oriented policing services. Basically, what the grant does is pays for three years of law enforcement entry, law enforcement officer's wages. The grant does not cover fringe benefits or overtime, so that would fall on the city to be in compliance with this grant. The city would have to pay the fourth year of wages. So the grant pays for your first three, city pays for the fourth. This grant cannot be used to fill, as an apartment, we have seven members. This can't fill the seventh spot, it has to be an eighth officer. We would like to use it, the emphasis that we're going to use it for is the school resource officer. Instead of trying to go other avenues, if we do this ourselves, I think we'll have a better impact, a little more control over it. The grant pays up $225,000 per position, being we're a small department, we only can get one position. Sioux Falls last year had five officers from this grant. Rapid City had one. Rosebud was actually awarded, I believe it was $230,000 last year. So we're not, we would be the only agency in the state to use this. On the fourth year, we cannot attrac, we cannot bring that person into our department as a seventh officer and state that we're paying the wages. It has to be one year of him being the eighth officer for that wage. We, if we aren't in compliance with that, we can apply, reapply for the grant from a penalty of one to three years. But I think that this is a good way to get an officer in the school. One of the reasons we need it is the bullying issue. From the other, from the other, the other things we've been doing with the community, the youth qualification award, we have to be getting impact with the youth, and this is one way to get an officer into the school and see what we can do.
So you want the city to pay the fourth year for a police officer to be at the school?
Correct. And then from the...
Well, we've also got cooperation with the school district, at least with the current superintendent, and we've also approached the county with helping to pay also.
The county, right, so they...
Well, they have to take it to budget.
It's, you know, it's hard to tell, the bad part about this grant is it's hard to tell what financial situation we're going to be in four years. Are we able to take care of this position? That's, that's the hard part of this grant. But I think in the three years of this position being paid for, I think it would be proven that this is a great thing, that we do need an eighth officer. And if we decide to, after the fourth year, stay the eight-man department and then apply for the grant again, we technically be at a nine-man department. But...
Every time you do that, then you got to provide another police car, and you got to provide everything that comes along with every new officer.
Correct. And that's why that, that three years of this, you know, the first three years of this grant, that's why I'm hoping that it would prove its value to the community, to the parents, to the kids, having somebody at the school. The other added benefit is during the summer, we have an extra officer on the street.
I just can't see the way the taxes are going up in the city of Hot Springs, how we can afford another officer just to hang out at school all day long.
Correct. Come with me someday up there and see how the issues I've dealt with at the school.
Yeah, I highly recommend you discuss this issue with the teachers. I've had teachers approach me, I guess, nobody who saw it at the gym, but I was at the gym one night with tears in his eyes, begging for support for this.
And why don't they go talk to the school board?
The school board is supportive of it.
Then why don't we do it now, then? Why don't we have an officer up there a couple hours a day?
Because you have to budget. We're trying to partner with the county because it goes out in the...
We budget for a police department, so why couldn't one officer be up there now for a couple hours a day?
Could, but then you take away from what's going on within the city. This would be a hands-on officer. This officer would get to know the kids, the kids are comfortable with this officer, see him on a daily basis. It wouldn't be, you know, a different face up there two hours a day, and they know when the cops are, and they know when to be good. They know the cops will be there eight hours a day. And it's not the major issues a lot of times that the, that the law enforcement officer are making impact on. It's the smaller issues that you, you take care of before it becomes a big issue.
Where this is done, do the schools ever pay part of this?
Through this, no.
For the first three years?
I could look at the fine, the fine prints of it to see if that fourth year, you know, if it proves itself to the community, if it proves itself to the school, can we go, I mean, even half that fourth year to be in compliance with this?
You got a question, Don?
Mike, I did, I spoke great detail with some of the teachers, our teachers especially. I know they're in full support of this, and I know there's been communication and just, if you will, rumor talking about them supporting $15,000 of this effort, and if the county was 15, the city was 15, that'd cover your, I mean, you're looking at $41,000 a year with that figure, correct?
Yeah.
Or just over. So I mean, 15 from each department, that'd cover it.
That's what we're trying to do. We don't have that in place yet, but we, we've gone before the council and worked with current school superintendent. You know, things got a little interesting there, and the county, just like the city, would have to budget for it. So it would be committing the city to budgeting four years out for this if we applied for this grant, but we've got a pretty serious need in the schools.
And it's a...
If you're connected to the schools, you're pretty aware of the bullying issues and drugs and just behavior we don't want to have in our schools.
You know, and it's a, it's a hard thing to, I don't know, I guess you could say gamble on the taxpayer money to see if this is going to pay for itself. I honestly don't see how it would be a great benefit to the community. During the summer, we have extra boots on the ground. During the school year, we have, you know, if, if we're having a sporting event, we might have an issue, we have a school resource officer there. We'll have his desk there. It'll be, I, I think just from the, the times I go to the school to deal with the issues, a lot of those issues could be taken care of immediately, and you wouldn't have a repeat if you had an officer at the school.
So you're saying that it couldn't be one of your current officers, then?
What's that?
This couldn't be one of your current officers?
It would, it would have to be solely for, there, there's different...
But would you, how, you couldn't take one of your officers now and do it, could you?
It would have to be the entry level.
I have a question. Would we be in compliance with the grant if we shared the fourth year cost with the county and the school as Kim was proposing?
That's what I was going to look at. You know, it's, the manual is that thick and the application is that thick.
We've already talked about it.
I, I believe from what I've read, I believe that we would be in compliance.
You believe, yes?
I believe, yes. I mean, from, from everything I've read, I think that as long as we keep him as a member of the police department in the same function that he's been for the first three years, that would be in compliance.
You got another question behind the line?
No, just a comment. Shouldn't we ever be in a position that many cities have been in, when a child shows up at a school with a weapon, and we don't look to think that this might be a positive thing to keep that from happening? It's food for thought because it's this kind of place we live in, and it's possible. And is it worth that much money? And my answer to you would be, I think it would be worth that much money, and I can use my tax money for it.
Thanks, Don.
Thanks, Don. And to add on to that point, if an unfortunate situation like that ever happened, even if I'm two blocks away, the 15, 20 seconds it's going to take me to get there, if we have an armed, uniformed officer on the school to stop the threat, I, I don't see how we can go wrong. If we have somebody on grounds that can, that can stop the threat.
South Dakota, you do realize teachers can't likely carry...
They can, but...
They don't want to.
Are they, are they as trained?
We don't know, we haven't talked to everyone.
Are they, are they as trained as us, though? Will they take the shot if they need to?
They don't, they're there to...
I would, I would want to put, by law, they can. But I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to put them to make them make that decision. And we have bulletproof vests. You know, like I said, that, that 20 seconds of response time, I'd rather than engaging my officer than hunting down assassins.
I make a motion to the way it feels.
I'll second that. Any other discussion?
How much? Oh, sorry. How much is a grant for every year?
Up to $225,000 per position.
So how do they determine how much you get?
We're going to have to put the hours together for entry level position.
So you'll get just that much?
Yep, yep. And, and just to make sure you guys heard what I was saying before, overtime costs are not covered by this grant. So if we, if the officer works, let's say 100 hours of overtime in that year, the city has to pay for that.
So do you have a vehicle we can use to get to the school and all that, or are we going to have my having a grant, or is there a vehicle?
Who would be responsible for managing his overtime?
I would.
So I would hope you would.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Go forward, Mike, chief.
Thank you very much.
If you want to stay in the hot seat there, we're going to go to the next item. Please share with us what NIXLE is.
All right, I'll just start off by saying this is not going to cost us anyone, so everybody take your time. NIXLE is an emergency broadcast system that we can send over email or text. It's very easy to sign up for. You go to nixle.com. NIXLE is N-I-X-L-E dot com. It's going to ask for your zip code. You enter your zip code, it'll ask for your email, basic information. Right away, it'll send, you'll be able to receive the emails to, or you'll be able to receive email. At that time, it'll ask if you want to receive a text alert as well. It'll then text your phone. You get, you send back yes, and you're set up. So anytime bad weather would come through, this is going to threaten if we were getting a tornado, if we know a flash flood's coming, I can send out my, my little message, hit send, and I can send it to anybody that's subscribed. Also, when you, when you subscribe to NIXLE, you can be informed of Amber Alerts right there. You can, you can check the box for that. So anytime an Amber Alert comes out, anytime I send out a message, if we have an incident on the highway, a highway is blocked, if we have a, any situation that's going to affect the community, it's very easy to sign up for. Dispatch will advise me, I'll send it out. It would be quicker than Facebook because everybody always has their phone in their pocket. So it's, it's free, so we can, there's, there's not too much issue with that. If we have, you know, even for parades where we know that the... If we have, you know, even for parades where we know that the road is going to be blocked for two hours, I can send that message out. Everybody would know. You can also, with this program, businesses in town can get NIXLE, anybody, anybody can get NIXLE. So, when people sign up for ours, as soon as another business or, let's say, the Fall River Sheriffs Office signs up for it, you can also sign with them. So, I mean, you could have ten notifications going by ten different groups. It's a great program. Everybody, if they don't have a scanner, you can see Facebook blowing up, here's a simple answer to anybody's question that is going on.
Why is that whistle going off?
Yes. I don't even know why the whistle went off earlier, I was in my house, so.
Well, I can tell you I have pictures. See you later.
But no, that's, it's a free, simple, it's a simple plan for everybody to be in the know.
And it's already in place for our zip code, so it's really, we wanted Mike to share that with the community and to let you know that we've done this and that we encourage you to use it if you want to know.
You mentioned the other businesses, do other emergency management, like places use it, like the National Weather Service or any other big?
They do. We're the only one in Fall River that has it right now.
But that may change.
Hopefully. Also, when you sign up, you can put in five phone numbers or email addresses of acquaintances to get them to come to the website to sign up. So, if we could spread the word, I'll probably send out a test message here in a week or so. And there's no, also with that, there's no carrier fees, I guess. When I send the message to you, you're not going to incur a cost for it.
Chief Close, I want to thank you for these two programs that you support in the community.
Does it do that to the other one?
Nope.
So, don't go against your plan?
No. It's all free. You can upgrade to a bunch of fancy additions to it, but I think this plain Jane setup that we have is all we can work out.
All right. I'll call you back up in a couple minutes.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you. Thank you. Doing a great job, we really appreciate it. Item E, which is the motion to sign the community use schools facilities lease, and F is tied into that as well. It's basically like we discussed earlier, formalizing the agreements that we've had in place between the city and the school for years. I'll make a motion to sign this agreement.
I'll second you.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Aye.
Which one were you?
Yeah.
I was looking at somebody.
So, which way did you go?
Yes.
You're okay with that? Okay. So, basically, this is, just so you know, this is something that I would sign and the school would keep a copy and the city would keep a copy and this is our agreement for sharing facilities.
You know, I haven't read the whole, I suppose I can't go back and talk on this one. But I mean, who's got the liability of one of these gymnasts for it?
That is covered in here.
Number fifteen.
I see none of the spots are filling in. Page, page.
Number fifteen.
Facility use and equipment agreement. None of the, none of the blanks are filled in. Who's responsible for what? Maybe it says it somewhere else, maybe I'm looking in the wrong spots.
Yeah.
Insurance, number sixteen. I don't have pages.
That's the number. That's been the first degree.
What's this? Facility use and equipment?
That's the school board's form. This is the first one I've had that I remember.
The school board had their meeting last Monday in approval for these. So, they're okay, it's just we need to make sure you guys are okay.
So, the school covers the liability?
If it's their event, like the gymnastics.
I guess as long as we're discussing it after the fact, are they ever going to work towards a goal of opening up our gymnasium?
Open gym as part of this?
No, I'm talking about trying to find a place for the gymnast so we can market our gymnasium here.
Is the school?
Yeah.
I can't speak for the school.
You said you was at the meeting and they voted for it, so it was one.
I was not at their meeting. They brought me the documents after their meeting. So, I believe that kicked that motion carried. And in conjunction with that is the specific facility use agreement for summer rec, which is item now.
I think Nolan worked something on this.
Well, their attorneys, our attorney.
It's been in the works for quite a while.
Yeah, and every year we asked about it. And every year, just still there.
I did have them backwards, but I, we agreed to the general facilities use agreement. Now, we need to vote on the specific one for summer rec for this year. I made that motion. Any other discussion on the facilities to be used by the summer rec program? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. We have a lot of ratio. Nope, you go ahead. Okay. Oh, where are we at? G, we want to have fireworks on the Fourth of July and possibly New Year's again, so it's basically whenever, this really wasn't done as a contract before, but Misty's been...
It's done every year.
A contract?
Yeah.
Okay. So, we just want to make sure you guys are okay with spending the money on fireworks.
We budgeted for it.
Are we going to vote on splitting, what we're going to split up tonight or are we going to do it now? Because you said New Year's and Fourth.
Well, I think it's to purchase or not to purchase. Right, Misty?
It's, they will deliver fireworks just by July.
Is what we did last year, we held back part of them.
We couldn't do it.
Motion for discussion.
Sure.
It seems like three, four years ago, the other mayor said, we always buy these around December to get a lot better deal on them. Are they easy to get bought in the summertime here?
Did the bill just come to you?
Yeah, this contract for service just came in the mail, so I don't know what happened in the past, but we had used this specific company before. I don't know if bids were taken, if we went out.
We didn't start them back, we notified us.
Steve Alexander usually orders those and he usually doesn't by March, so I don't know if he has done it or not.
Yeah, he probably did order it, which probably triggered this contract.
So, we got it.
Because it says they're going to deliver them on or before July fourth. So, we don't have any in inventory in any of that.
We had a pretty good display last New Year's Eve, so I don't, I would be surprised if there's anything left over, but I don't know.
But I think if you do buy them off-season, you get a better deal, better package deal.
We can ask or look into that, but maybe that has to do with Steve orders or what, doesn't look into that, doesn't want, we just got a bill. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, we'll have fireworks. All right, I'm going to go to committee reports and Carl is not there tonight and you probably didn't have your meetings.
Well, I met with Carl, but if there was any, we didn't know.
Carolyn, did you guys have any? Okay. Wes?
Yep, we met, we talked and we hired the person that's going to come help us on the thirtieth, put the playground together. We're looking for volunteers, I guess, if anyone wants to come help. The city guys, they have moved the dirt down there and they've got the site very much I think that's about all we talked about, basically, kind of a short meeting. Do you remember anything else? We basically just finalized the plans for that playground equipment and getting the person hired.
So, you are looking for volunteers on the thirtieth at Brookside with the new equipment involved? Okay.
Sure, we don't want to turn anybody away if we want to volunteer.
And we don't want rain, so if anybody can control that.
What time was?
We're not sure yet. We'll let you know right at the county, next council meeting. Oh, no, we can't, it'd be too late.
You were talking the thirtieth of this month.
Yes, yes. I was thinking there was one more, but there's not. Maybe I can talk to Kurt or Brett and we can put something in the community happenings or something. Maybe we can put it on the city website, too.
Yeah, when we know, I mean, right now, we know that we're planning for him to meet here on the thirtieth, so I would assume, you know, by nine AM type of thing. It's an all, he's here all day for, you know, the pay, so thank you, Wes.
One question on recreation, and I don't know if this is, on the plunge, didn't we have a competition going for the new logo for the side of the building? I haven't heard nothing about that.
We're going to roll that out on the first, June first, maybe.
June first? Just was wondering if it's in the works.
It is in the works.
Yeah.
You spoiled it.
Yeah, you spoiled a surprise. Any other, any other discussion on the parks? Okay. Mike, do you have a public safety report or anything additional?
Actually, I had a couple people show up for my meeting the first time, so that made me feel good. They did get the idea of candy gum donuts, I don't know if that was a cop joke before, but, so let's talk about some of the few issues in town. Speeders, talk a little about the cemetery. As an apartment, we will be full staffed come next week, excuse me, the week after. We will have a reserve officer at the auction this Friday, just to kind of keep an eye on everything, make sure enough to wop away. We have dramatically been enforcing the speed laws around town, like you've noticed the young officers out and about. Other than that, and obviously the ACO issue will need to be addressed this week, so we will get that in line and I'll report back the next time, what we figure out.
Kind of a question regarding speeding. What's the status on our temporary, our portable speed sign? What's going on there?
It's ordered and it's being up to the state to put it up. It's here.
No, 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 the portable one, one that we can request on location.
The portable one, if the circuit board is blown up.
So, what to fix it?
Because you didn't budget any money for you to fix it.
We budgeted money for all kinds of stuff. Equipment.
We budgeted money for a new one, not to replace or fix.
That's called equipment, probably, or maintenance.
Okay, but that's already been budgeted for other things, that's not to...
So, it's gone is what you're saying.
It's not gone, but there's other things other than, we basically have to buy a new one.
Why can't we just replace the circuit board?
You can talk to Steve, but it's pretty well shot. From talking with the manufacturer, you might as well buy a new one.
A new unit?
Yes.
You're talking hundreds of dollars versus five or six thousand dollars.
Talking manufacturers, I just pull them, I don't fix them.
I'm going to call a manufacturer, yes. I don't know why we're having so many issues with it.
I don't know if it's not sealing or what, you know, what the deal is, but it's...
Wes, Steve did look at it, so you may want to...
I know Billy and Kurt also looked at it. So, I have...
And they complete stops with the stop sign?
Yes. That's always a good thing.
About the U-turn signs on the street?
That's the street department.
I think it's the safety department, isn't it?
We're working with the DOP on that, see if we can put them on the street as opposed to big signs on our historical looking lamp posts.
The crosswalk signs that go in the middle of the road, I was asked by the county when we'd be replacing those. Basically, we usually take them away in the winter to make room for the snowplows and then we put those back.
Correct. The ones from the schools, on one school gets out, will come back downtown.
Okay. And that'll go in front of the courthouse, the county will let them know?
Courthouse and seahull.
And be at that old, be at that...
Then we'll move back one half, well, we probably did it Friday.
And I think, well, you might be ordering some new ones as well. A lot of them have been out, don't know whether those are new.
They're very trendy.
They are, they're way more expensive than you can imagine. All right, Dwight?
I missed the meeting, I'll refer to him.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
We had a meeting. Jason tomorrow to go at court stop. He's in the process of trying to figure out what he's going to do with his irrigation and he's decided he can build a couple of different designs for us to look at. One with the usage of the pond, of building a pond for water, and then another one for, for like a well system. He can look into some permits and get some of that stuff for us. The April cleanup week went good, had thirteen loads of all the landfill, consisted of seven loads of rubble and six loads of household items. Total cost was eleven hundred and seventy-four, eleven hundred dollars and seventy-four cents. Overall project update, they're still working on Garden Street. Took a filter, starter ring's been installed, so they're starting to put it back up. They're going to have some tree cutting down here where the new loading dock is going and they've started work on some of the miter concrete projects around town, replacing the curb and gutter and stuff that's been broken. That was it.
All right, thank you, Tom. Craig?
We had a short meeting, we just signed papers, let alone that we applied for, for the opening of the new cell over there. I talked to our secretary and everybody there about the city of Hot Springs wanting a DNR report and she said she's going to email you with it.
Okay, good.
Carrie Barker complained about being accused of doing something by a city councilman and he is a little upset. I told him get a copy of the tape, so he has it for his record, and he informed me to tell you guys that there's more.
Natural occurring.
Well, they, all they are, the filings or whatever they're called from the...
Talings?
Talings. From the uranium they mined over there years ago is buried right behind the landfill and it's a hundred times worse than anything that you brought in there. But there ain't nothing bad, everything's tested by DNR and it wouldn't come in there with that.
Okay, I look forward to the reports, thank you for asking for those. Okay. Is that one Julie Miles?
Julie Miles. Carrie Barker would like to have a copy of the tape.
He probably should talk to Justin. Okay. So, she'll email me the reports when?
Well, I thought she'd been good already. Maybe she said Nolan or you, so maybe she sent it to Nolan.
Can you ask her son or me? Because he's out for Jamal Williams. Be nice to have those for the next meeting.
Thank you, all the way.
You can just call her, I mean, she's, it's a public meeting each time and she's the secretary.
I'll bear that, but Craig represents us and if he can help us out, I appreciate it. All right, Misty, you had a busy day.
I did have a busy day. Would you like to speak into the microphone or can everyone hear you?
Yeah, I can, no.
No. I'll get that.
We'd like to remind you again that we have an election coming up on June second. Thank you so much for approving my resolution appointing the election clerks and thank you to all of the clerks who said yes to being on our election board. We'll be having an election school May twenty-eighth here at the Mueller Center from four to five PM to go over the information for the newly appointed clerks, although I do have a number of them that have served before. Election will be June second for both wards one and ward three and also the school, all here at the Mueller Center from seven AM to seven PM, so one polling place.
So one pulling place for all voters. Absentee ballots can be voted on at City Hall effective right away. So if you're not gonna be around on the second, but still interested in voting, please take the time to step in and one of our lovely assistants will help you get your ballot and be able to vote. We have, I have finance officer school coming up in June from the 10th to the 12th in Pier. Looking forward to that. Thank the council for allowing me to go and proving my travel. We also have budget training workshops coming up on July 15th in Rapid City. Like to thank the council members who are interested in attending and the mayor and the city administrator who's not here, who also said that they would attend. Looking forward to that budget training workshop. We did set some dates today that I'd like to share with all of you. We do have budgetary funding request forms for any organizations that are interested in asking the city council for money. Those forms are available now, so if anyone would like to request them, just give me a call at City Hall or shoot me an email and I will send you that form. We'd like to have all those forms in by the 24th of July, that's a Friday. We'd like to have those forms before budget hearings. We scheduled dates for our budget meetings, July 28th and 30th at 5:30. I'm not sure if we have those at City Hall or here. They're usually at City Hall, thank you. We scheduled the dates, but we didn't schedule the locations. So July 28th and 30th, it's a Tuesday and Thursday at 5:30 at City Hall will be the first two budget meetings. We'll have two additional, if needed, budget meetings, the second week, August 4th and 6th. Again, starting at 5:30. We would like to allow presenters at the first budget meeting on July 28th. They can come at six o'clock. We'll be scheduling times, allowing people five to 10 minutes to present. We won't be making any decisions on any funding requests until after budget hearings. And you don't have to come back for that. Everybody will be notified by letter. On the auctions this Friday, so City Auction, we're getting rid of a lot of stuff. So for you people who like stuff in the audience, please come and take some of it. That's our notebook. That's right. Thank you.
Thanks, Misty. Nolan's not here, obviously, but he's on vacation, but he's still keeping me very busy. He was very involved in the agenda and other items with the city in preparation for this meeting. For mayor's report, I'm just gonna give you an update that we're still moving forward with the airport master plan. We've given comments on sections one through three. It's been very helpful. Tracy, myself, and Nolan have given feedback on that in Georgia. So if anybody else cares about the master plan, they need to let me know. That's moving forward. There are, uh, maybe you can help me out here. The community forum is Wednesday night?
Wednesday, this coming Wednesday from seven to nine.
Here at the Mueller Center?
Here at the Mueller Center. We will be in the theater. We will have forums that people can, are welcome to pick up to write down their questions. We would like to have the questions be as closely issue-oriented as possible.
Great. Thank you for organizing that and I highly recommend that you come and attend if you're in Ward one or three. Or is the school board there?
School board will also be included. There are four candidates for two open seats on the school board. We will be having the candidates for both boards one and three and I hope you're still considering Tim coming to represent Ward two.
Okay. Thank you and thanks for your interest in getting candidates for the public. The other thing I had, which we kind of talked a lot about already with the cat and dog ordinance, I knew it would be an issue. It has been for several days. And I encourage the council to maybe review that and see if there isn't something that we need to modify or focus more on enforcing or changing. But, you know, it has been a very passionate few days at City Hall with a pet that is cared about a lot by their owners. So, you know, we want to be as compassionate as we can, but we also have to realize that, you know, animals can be a nuisance. So we have to see if we've got a good balance there still.
The committee that used to do that's gone, so I guess who are you proposing do it? You done away with that committee, remember?
Wes, I just asked the council, so that's what I'm asking.
I think he had a good idea about, what is it? Take the animal, you know, if you take them with yourself and then if you want to turn them over to a rancher or somebody, then...
If that's our ordinance, why aren't we doing it?
And I'm not sure that he didn't hold them for a couple days. I don't...
We can find out if the animal plays a part.
The gentleman who was very upset is telling a different story than I'm hearing from the animal control officer. So we need to not necessarily assume that John did what he said.
All we need to do is go talk to the army ordinance or...
Don't tell you.
Tell us about that, Jerry, huh?
It wasn't.
Well, there you go.
He didn't take the cat. That's the problem.
But that's what I'm saying, you know, all those ordinances that he said were breaking. Well, if they're ordinances, we need to abide by them. We're breaking our own law.
So maybe we have a copy in next week or two weeks in our packet of the ordinance, the animal?
It's seventeen pages.
I still have mine, Misty. I don't need.
And you can look at them online now, too. Alright. We do have a feral cat problem. We do have minimal complaints. We do have people missing their cats, so...
I figured out how they bother people, or the cats does bother them.
Well, I know. I had thirty feral cats in my backyard for a while. They stink. Cat urine is disgusting. I didn't hear what you said, dear.
See, one part of my wife after, when the cats came for birds, they were birds, yeah. Most special people, I mean, they...
People definitely love their pets, so we, you know, we do want to have a happy balance, a balance as best we can. We just put your coat on, Tim? Okay. Alright, I just want somebody to make a motion for us to go.